Yeah, question.
No, you're from the nobody there, nobody representing. No, the fifth board is unrepresented by.
Okay.
Have some other cell phones? Here. Here.
Here.
Do they have that?
Thank you.
Here. I want to hear. Here.
Here. This point for anybody in the community who wants to see this one. I know we're all agreed tonight from what happened last night, but anyway, we all have to move on and as trying to be a nicer, nicer old man, decided like I said last time that I want to acknowledge a part of our community and what they do for us because often we talk about it, but we don't do anything about it. Tonight I've got three officers here. It's not just for them, but our police department, what they do for our community. I want to thank them for all of this. Earlier, I presented at a public safety committee where I think things should start in committee, at least for discussion, is a need for the city to look at having a master plan for public safety for its future. Please then fire it forward. Why? Because each year there's a budgetary process that goes in and sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. They have a wish list, they have a list of needs, and I think something like this would be very important to structure the investments in public safety for the future. It would include capital equipment, it would include manpower, it would include facilities, it would include technology for the future. The police officer 20 years from now is going to be quite different than it is today in terms of protection, equipment, and what the needs are. The fire department will be the same. Remote calls in terms of identifying fires before fires actually happen and residences now ready available in terms of security systems that you can install in your house which can be wired in to the police department or a special branch of public safety in the private sector that would allow that information to be instantaneously tracked. In addition, I think the needs in the future are quite evident. We've got a 53-year-old building, 1960 nightmare, was that one of them built?
Seventy.
Seventy, 1970?
Uh-huh.
Fifty-two. The facilities for both the fire department and police department are ineffective and inefficient at best. If you haven't toured the building, you should know that. Evidence room, fire range, intercepting. So, how do we change that? I suggest that we build a new fire station. A new fire station coupled with the municipal building on Washington Street. I'll get site specific. Why? Because the fire protection program for the future is not evidently in play now because of the band-aid approach that you're doing with the existing fire stations. All you're doing is removing a problem that's going to come back. A new fire station has a drive-through threshold for both the fire departments to go in and out in conjunction with the Chautauqua Park area which could be used as somewhat of a public safety ground for training. All works together with the design and development of the municipal building garage. The master plan would help identify that and make that happen. How could it be funded? I suggest you fund it out of American Rescue Plan, which it makes an eligible public safety cost and also something to look for sustainability for our public safety for the future. Manpower needs, however, are current. They're not something that's going to be flushed away by magically not ignoring what the needs are. And I think the needs are relevant and I let the officers here to talk about that. And I think if we use the idea that we want to create succession, training, and development of current officers that are not on board now, it would go a long way to showcase that we're building for the future. So when retirements occur, and they will occur in the next two to three years, those officers are in play as vital officers that already had the training in them. I'll let others talk about the specifics. The other thing which is close and dear to my heart is the future of the Board of Public Utilities. I don't know that anyone in this room understands the dynamics that are going to happen in the state of New York. I'm close to it and I believe it's imperative that the mayor appoint people to the board that are knowledgeable about going into the Board of Public Utilities, not serve as a training ground for their opportunities to express the direction and the development of that utility. If you don't do that, you're going to lose this utility. And that's friends and council people, is what's going to happen in the next 10 years. The DPU is pro-gassing out, are pro-dicking out, they're going to spend $5 million on solar and renewable energy applications. That's just a small drop in the bucket on what's going to happen to overcome renewable energy credits and zero energy credits which are basically the carbon tax. The council has a choice. This is a very important body and commission for our future. You can't take it with the idea that any volunteer can do the job. That's not going to happen. It'll take years for those people to understand. We can't wait that long. You have a choice, City Council, to have volunteers of different commissions. The DPU is not the zoning board of appeals. It is not the river commission. It is not a normal commission. It's a commission of technology and advancement, and the stresses and strains that are going to be on that utility in the next 10 years have to be involved with people who know what's going on before they get there and try to learn it. Thank you.
Anything else that you can add?
Good evening. Lieutenant P. S. with Jamestown Police Department. I want to talk about some police staffing concerns. The chief has mentioned staffing concerns through the public safety committee. I just want to address the council. In order to have full staffing in the city of Jamestown with the police department, we're supposed to have 65 police officers. As of right now, we have 56 officers. We are short. We are currently in need of four officers to be hired to be compliant with the Police Impact Staffing Award that is agreed between the police unit and the city. The staffing levels include police officers, detectives, supervisors, two captains and the chiefs actually included in the staffing criteria. Included in this number is one detached military member who's on military leave, so he counts for our manpower even though he's not here to assist. We have one SRO that's assigned to GHS, also does not assist for road patrol. These officers count for staffing even though they're down the road. Additionally, we have two officers right now that are on light duty status either because of illness or injury. I spoke with several detectives, they're also short, two detective spots that we haven't filled, just because we don't have the manpower to do so. Also in the detective bureau, they're also short two guys on light duty as well for illness or injury. They told me that the caseload is overwhelming for them guys. They split different job tasks, case detective, and then they also help out in the evidence room. The decrease in staffing level for patrol and detectives will have a negative impact on both the officers and the city of Jamestown residents. Slower response time for calls of service, longer follow-up time on investigations by detectives. We had a gentleman that just came in tonight yelling and screaming at one of the officers that worked the desk, the command desk, stating, "Why isn't my case being looked into? There was a burglary a couple days ago." Again, we don't have the manpower. Also, a decrease in community engagements. We were, the chief was a big proponent with the mayor's plan about getting community engagement, getting officers on the street, getting officers out of the cars, beat patrols, walking through the neighborhoods. With the staffing that we're at, I can tell you, as short as we are right now, it's going to be just as bad in the summertime, and we're not going to be able to do as much as we did last year. There's going to be a decrease in crime prevention activities, bike patrol. Again, when we don't have enough shift officers to, we just have enough shift officers to staff the road, you don't have any extras. You don't have a two-man bike patrol to go out and do proactive police work. You don't have the plainclothes cars to go out and try to apprehend drugs and gun seizures and a bunch of other activities that we try to try to do. The decrease in proactive police work and self-initiated police activities correlates with less traffic stops by officers because they're handling more service calls, less officers working plainclothes. This will have a decrease in gun, drug seizures, and arrests, which has a strong correlation between an increase in property crime and larcenies. Some of the concerns by officers and detectives. Officers handling more calls of service for being short-staffed, higher caseload for detectives, and additional job duties. The Jamestown Police Department has the highest call volume in Chautauqua County. We have the highest mental health crisis in the county. We have the highest number of arrests in the county, drug seizures, gun arrests in Chautauqua County. We have the higher, highest number of overdoses and overdose death rates in the county. Again, we're short-staffed. How can we continue to do what we need to do? This all contributes to retention and recruitment. This is just not a problem in the city of Jamestown. This is a problem across the country. You see it on the news, you see it everywhere else. We talked about it at city council meetings, we talked about it in private meetings with negotiations. It's here, gentlemen. It's here. Over the last year and a half, we've lost five other, we've lost five officers to other agencies. Three officers to Erie County agencies, one officer to the New York State Police, and we have one officer that works in the United Court system. Officers have left for better pay and better retirement benefit, benefit packages. They also left through less stress. We currently have two officers right now that are eligible to retire. They have 20 years or more of service, so you're additionally looking at two officers that could go. In the next 18 to 24 months, we'll have an additional three officers that are eligible to retire. So you're looking at five officers within the next two years possible. We're a very young department, and with the potential retirements by these veteran officers, we will lose a great deal of knowledge and experience going forward. These veteran officers train the younger officers. If there's questions, they ask. And a lot of these officers that are going to retire are going to be command-staffed officers, lieutenants and above. Again, now's the time to hire people. Doug spoke a little bit about it. Get people hired now. That way we'll, you still have the senior, the veteran and the senior officers here. The younger officers can learn from that. So, part of recruitment. And again, we have a small police academy class this year, and this isn't just in the city of Jamestown. Again, this is across the country. Usually an academy class is anywhere from 20 to 28 people. We have 14 in the academy this year. Out of that 14, there's only eight officers, recruit officers, that we can pull from because they're county, they're on the county residency list. Out of those eight, there are seven jurisdictions in the county. Jamestown, Dunkirk, Lakewood, Bustai, Fredonia, Westfield in the county that pool from these officers. Getting officers here, it's been a struggle to try to hire people. Lateral transfers. Myself and a lot of these other officers, I've asked other officers that we know that work for outside agencies, "Come work for the city of Jamestown. We have good pay, we have good benefits." They don't want to come here. The pay is somewhat comparable, but the workload is 70% less. So again, why come work here when you could do the same job somewhere else with a lot less call volume? So in addition to the four officers that we currently need to hire to get back at the regular 60 that we're supposed to have, I'm, I would like to see the city hire at least three officers. When we hire these officers, this will give them the opportunity to train and become more veteran officers by the time the turnover and the retirements happen. That's all. Thank you.
Do you have those numbers in like, Chief, you know, Jamestown has the most of this. I'm not doubting this. I'm not doubting your workload. Don't take this the wrong way. But what I don't like is Jamestown portraying consequently the way that it's done. Yes, we probably do have those most numbers, but we also have the most population of them in city and town and village in the county. So do we have those numbers like, is your crime analyst putting that together?
Yes. In fact, it'll be in our annual report. It should be due, it should be done February 1st.
Thank you. I would love to see that. Not that I'm doubting you.
Ms. Kelsley, the, a lot of the stats are also from the Post-Journal. It's reported for the drug overdoses and all the other activities as well.
Right. I mean, I just, that includes you guys as well, your division of public safety. I would like to see some of those. I mean, I know we have issues. I'm not saying we don't have issues. I'm just saying I would like to see those. I'm a numbers person. I want to see the details.
I would agree with the statement that there's a issue with recruitment. Obviously, these four positions need to be filled. I'm going to address something right now that some people might not want to hear this, and you might not want to hear it either, Lieutenant. You recently had an injury at the hospital, correct?
Correct.
Were you the shift commander or were you present when that injury had happened?
Yes, I was.
Why were you called down there?
To assist somebody who was being disorderly. The call came in as a disorderly person fighting with staff members.
At any time when you were down there, were you asked to subdue someone so they could be chemically medicated?
Again, if this is, we can talk elsewhere about this because there could be potential of other things and then...
I understand it, but I'm, I'm not calling you out. What I'm saying is, is that you guys are often called down to the hospital.
Yes, and if we don't go to the hospital and assist, we're going to be doing a police report for an assault second when a, when a injured nurse or a doctor gets assaulted.
I, I understand that, but what I'm saying is you had an officer who, who ended up with a serious physical injury.
Correct.
Who was now on light duty, who was possibly a 207C situation. And I know when I was working, there were many times that we were called down there and we were asked to physically restrain a patient so they could be, a chemical restraint. In other words, they were going to receive a shot. Now that went by the wayside for about five years, I believe it was. Chief Snelling said, "We're not doing that anymore. It's a liability. It's a liability to the officers and it's a liability to the city." So I guess my question is, is are we back to doing that again?
We've been doing that for a while.
So you're saying that you're being called down to the hospital to...
To assist with, with a, with a disorderly patient that's out of control.
Correct. But are you being asked to physically restrain people so they could be, a chemical restraint could take place?
With security officers present, yes, we assist.
Are the security officers allowed to touch patients? Are they allowed to...
Absolutely.
Restrain patients?
Yes, they are.
So that's changed then in the last...
Yes, they have a security firm that's actually part of UPMC.
Okay. My concern is that we now have an officer that's injured, is on light duty, and this isn't necessarily calling out the police department and, and it's also not calling out the men and women, the nurses, the doctors, and the PAs down that are doing the work and doing the, especially under dealing with COVID right now. But it's more of an administrative thing from UPMC that I don't agree with the practice of the police department being called down to the ER and asked to physically restrain a patient so they can be, a chemical restraint can take place. And if that is taking place now or it's happening again, then I encourage the chief, I encourage your command staff to meet with the hospital and refuse to do that anymore. I mean, it's a liability to the city and it's a liability to officers. I mean, if someone, if you're physically restraining a patient so they can give them Hallidol or Ativan or whatever else drugs they are, and that person dies in custody, guess who's being sued? The officers present, the city's being sued, and, and it's going to fall on us. So I'm calling right now, if that, if that practice is being, is, is taking place once again, because I know it stopped for a period of years because Chief Snelling said, "We're not doing it anymore," I'm calling for that practice to stop. And I'm asking the chief and your command staff to refuse to engage in that. Obviously, you have to go down there and you have to answer if someone's being disorderly, but if they ask you to physically restrain someone so they can give them a shot and knock them out for 12 hours, you should refuse to do that because now we have a situation where we have an officer that could possibly end up leaving on a medical retirement, which is going to cost the city money, and he, his career might be done with. And he's on your desk working now, correct?
Correct. The, the issue too is you can't negate the fact that we're going down there to assist when you have a patient that is physically assaulting staff members down there.
I'm not saying you don't go on the call. What I'm saying is, is when you get down there, if they ask you to physically restrain someone so they can engage in a chemical restraint on someone, you are, you should not be doing that.
Correct. That's not where this all came from. We tried to get him under control and tried to de-escalate, de-escalate the situation as, as much as we could, and we had to go hands-on. That's, that's where it happened, trying to control this gentleman.
Can I clarify this? This will take two seconds. Officers are not being called down there strictly to hold someone down like...
Correct.
...you said, Joe. Officers are being called down there because somebody is violent, either assaulting staff in the process of damaging property, et cetera. They're not being called down there strictly to restrain somebody to be medicated.
Okay. I, I know in the past, officers have been called down there to assist in disorderly subjects. But while they're down there... But while they're down there, they've been asked in the past to engage in a physical restraint so they could medicate them. So I guess my question is, if that's continuing to take place, it needs to stop. I mean, very quick down there, you have a whole entire mental health wing down there. And everyone is pushing for, you know, a mobile crisis team and getting more mental health professionals involved in, in, in some of the police calls. Well, you're actually at, at a facility.
Correct, and dealing with an out of control patient. So they can't handle the situation, so we went down to assist. That was the biggest thing. And again, the gentleman didn't comply. He didn't listen to any of the medical staff, any of the mental health professionals. And we ended up going hands on with, in the security guard's help.
I understand that if someone is trying to assault you or assault others, but I'm just saying in, in the past, if it's still...
So this was taken a little bit out of context of what, you know, originally was portrayed. Again, we didn't go down there just to medicate that person. He was out of control, the call came in as he was assaulted, and that's why we went down.
Were you asked when you were down there to help physically restrain the patient so they could be medically restrained?
When we were down there, he was on the ground, we were, we were in control of that subject. That's when the staff members did what they did for, for the medical staff, the professionals did what they did.
My concern is that the city's liability is, we now have an injured officer, which points to some of the numbers that you're talking about. You have another person down on light duty. And possibly his career's done.
During the course of his duty, correct.
Correct, and his career might be done. He might need to have surgery, whatever, and his career could be over.
And again, that was during the course of his, of his job.
Correct, but it's not the police job to hold down a mental health patient so they...
That's not how it started.
I understand that, but what I'm telling you is it's happened in the past. And I'm calling for it to stop. If you're called down there and you're asked to physically restrain someone so they can inject them, I'm calling for that not to happen. That is not your job.
I'm agreeing, a hundred percent.
That's not your job.
A hundred percent. I'm, I'm agreeing with you on that. But again, when we go down there, it's usually for somebody who's assaulted, breaking out windows, has weapons in the room and all this other stuff, that they're not capable of controlling. And that's how we have to, we have to act. Otherwise, you're not acting.
And the majority of the time, yes, they do end up medicating and we do assist versus the nurses being punched in face.
So you're saying that you're helping them assist while they engage in a chemical restraint?
Every time we go down there, the majority of the time we're fighting with people.
So why isn't it that their security team that they haven't hired? Why is it not...
They can't handle it.
That's my whole point.
But that's the point. If they have their own security, then they should be addressing it with their staff as to how they can restrain the individual. They should not come up to our police office. I agree with you. I wholeheartedly agree with you because that's a responsibility.
For years, I went down there and I, and it's nothing on the staff, it's nothing on the nurses or the doctors, the PAs. They do a wonderful job, they're, they're, they're just swamped. It's more of an administrative issue now. And my concern was all the time for years, I, I said to them was that they didn't have adequate security. And someone is going to get hurt down there. And they're still going to get hurt. Years ago, their security wasn't even allowed to touch anyone. They, they literally were not allowed to go hands on. I don't know if that's changed, but back then they weren't.
They're UPMC security.
And it's their facility, they should be able to follow veterans. You expect it of a venue, that if they're going to have things out of control, that you bring in officers and you bring in your own security detail to handle those problems? It's no different with the hospital.
Correct. I, and that's my...
I'm saying...
But I mean, that goes back to numbers, police numbers. Now we, now we have someone injured.
Discussion with the chief, the mayor, it sounds like an administrative policy that needs to be addressed. Confidentiality, I think, contractual situation. So I'd like to move along. We'd like to address that. And the mayor and chief and councilors want to represent the department to try to build a policy that makes sure the officers... It's expected, most unexpected, and it's a slippery slope. I understand the point, but I don't know. It's the same situation for high schools. Someone's calling and has to restrain somebody who is hurting, I mean, it's a burden, what do you, sorry? I agree with you. We call to just specifically restrain for a medical procedure, but it's not going to be done anymore. And I think it's a discussion that should be had.
Just to add on that too, we don't go down there just for that.
That's why I don't want that, I don't want that. If, if that's happening in any way, shape or form, it's something that should be discussed, that it can stay a level between the city and UPMC. Anything else? If not, we will run to our committees. Going to do housing first?
Sure, we had no resolutions, but we did get an end of year or actually beginning of year update on what's happening with inspections and complaints. And I think for the sake of, I will let the director of development, Crystal Certic, chime in here because she probably got a lot more detail that she can condense since we've had this discussion already of housing.
Sure. I provided the housing committee with some documents. I will forward those documents to the rest of the council. Just reviewing sort of where 2021 ended, the caseload that we currently have. Updated them on the status of training for our newest code enforcement officers, which should be done in March, we expect, mid-March. We'll be adding some additional safety training for our code enforcement officers this year. We did, I, I don't know that we mentioned this, but just to remind everyone, housing court did start back up with Judge Panbienko this past Friday. So we'll have our, our second housing court date with the new judge this coming Friday. Hoping to try to start ramping up our cases. I know that he's scrambling to try to get through the backlog. What else? I don't have it in front of me.
I thought you did.
No, it's okay. Yeah, so just, just some reporting things. I'll, I'll be happy to provide those to the full council and answer any questions that you may have. We do have a pretty substantial caseload, I think it was around eight hundred, a little over eight hundred open cases currently.
Eight hundred and sixty-three.
And then we also talked a bit about the number of condemnations that we currently have and what our strategy is going forward. Really just trying to develop some different tools to address those condemnations and a combination of potential new ordinances and working with the, the land bank in the county on identifying auction properties, that sort of thing. So just kind of keeping everybody up to date on the, the many things that VOD is working on.
And just that, you know, try to be patient with the development department. As you said, the three code enforcement officers will be all on board and ready to go at the end of March. And right now, they're feeling a little bit short-handed because of the staffing situation, people undergoing training. So it's been a little, if you can see the numbers, a little bit difficult to keep up with all of it. And they've been addressing some of the other issues concerning garbage collection and things like that. So they've been a little overwhelmed to say the least. Also, we did talk about taking advantage. There are a number of things listed on the BPU website, the city's development department website, and Chaco Opportunities link as well for assistance with utility bills. The HEAP unit is open, there are funds to be applied for consistent utility payments. The ERAP, emergency rental assistance program. There are any number of things that people can use for rent in utilities that are in arrears and to try to take advantage of those programs and reach out for help to one of those entities that hopefully you can get some assistance if financial difficulties are a problem. And just one other item for those who participated in the Hands On Neighborhoods that helped in a lot of ways to clean up a lot of the city neighborhoods are having an event on February third on Zoom to honor and provide awards to those people who were instrumental in taking that program. I'm Demi Bradis from the land bank, along with Crystal Certic and others will be mentioned and hope people can attend that. That was it.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have quite a few resolutions and discussion about them. There we will have some questions. We have the corporation counsel for a couple of things as well. But first resolution we had was for the city hall building equipment. It had an emergency in the fire there in the elevator drive. So increase appropriation seventy-two hundred, decrease contingency accounts seventy-two hundred. And this is in the 2022 general fund budget. Larry and Jamie, I would say do seventy-two hundred out of the contingency, just so we're all aware. Which was meant for it, but also needs to be noted. Resolution number two. City Controller Ryan Thompson is authorized to attend the NYG FOA Annual Conference from April seventh through the ninth in Albany, Meridat, Albany, New York with expenses paid pursuant to Section 77B of the General Municipal Law. That was approved. Resolution number three is in short, instead of reading it, Ryan is, Ryan Thompson is authorized to participate in the NY class program under the terms of an NY class municipal cooperation agreement amended and re-stated as of March twenty-eighth, twenty-one T. But this is a new financial institution to enable us to get better investments, diversity, and fuel fees and minimum balances with it. Ryan, if you have anything else you want to add? I have also asked Controller to bring forth another resolution that will definitely be found as on our funding. This will involve two resolutions. Do you want to add anything else that I may admit?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Resolution number four. Again, this is the hiring of a school resource officer in the Jamestown Police Department. The intention is for the Jamestown Public Schools to fund the position for ten months. For the school resource officer's wages and benefits. The Jamestown Police Department will pay for the wages and benefits of the officer during two summer months. Subject to the approval of the Corporation Counselors to form. And my understanding is this will be in the middle school, correct, Chief?
Correct.
Anything else you want to add?
The position would start in the twenty-two to twenty-three school year, so not until August.
That was approved by us. Resolution number five resolved that the mayor and deputy fire chief hereby operate to enter into an agreement with Eagle Radio Technologies for the purchase of forty replacement Motorola Miniter six portable radio receivers for the total amount not to exceed thirteen thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars and zero cents. Subject to the approval of the Corporation Counselors to form. The chief, if he wants to add anything beyond, but this is an upgrade and this is funds that are going to be used from the fire department's 2021 leftover capital expenditure.
Yep, that's correct. As our current paging equipment is eighteen years old. The pagers that we, our members currently carry for off-shift recalls were purchased in 2004. While remaining a period of this technology, the data that's still the most cost-effective and efficient means of emergency recall that we have available to us. In recent years, the county upgraded to a new radio system, which has changed the frequency that they, these receive on. So that's rendered our existing paging equipment obsolete. It's simply the, the receivers that the members carry are what we're asking. All the other technology and the paging equipment itself is actually maintained by the sheriff's office. So it's just the cost of the pages that we're looking to cover. Thank you.
Resolution six and seven address our funding for DPW public works equipment and parts in public equipment. I had asked that we listen to Ryan Patrick's presentation before we made any... Everybody as a whole had some questions, so we didn't really tackle them, but in essence, we didn't really move forward. Resolution number eight is that Jeff Lehman, P E, Director of Public Works, being hereby authorized to direct it to sign an intermunicipal agreement. Project identification number five seven six one point eight two with the Chaco County authorizing use and access to certain city properties for construction of Foot Avenue over the Shadow Point River. Subject to the approval of Corporation Counselors to form. Back up, Marie, do you have more information for us tonight? So...
I have a whole lot more information. I think that within my guise of my position already, the state requires that the council resolution. Pretty appreciate, well, it goes along with the reconstruction of the Foot Avenue Bridge, which the county is providing.
Resolution number nine resolved that city of Jamestown management employee guidelines being hereby further revised and updated retroactive to January one, 2022. We had a bunch of questions about this, Mayor and Deputy District Corporation Counselor. He answered some questions and we gave him some homework, but we have some questions for you. Route three, position of legal assistant added. And then the administrative assistant to the mayor is just a title change?
Yep, the legal assistant was already a part of that. It was changed to a paralegal a couple of weeks ago.
But you left it in.
Oh, I see. We committed that change. And then there is a title change right now by assistant, I think, realized and considered separate. So it's just a civil service title change to match administrative system we use throughout the city.
Is this a civil service position though?
No.
And then the other concern was putting in the grant writer position, correct? That because that is a partially funded position through a partnership with a college, does that lock us into future...
No. Sorry, this is wrong, I'm sorry.
Or do we need to note that it's, you know, add more verbiage to it to clarify that?
Well, the management guidelines don't. It's just to ensure that that position has a set amount of vacation hours, sick time, things like that that we've already agreed to. So you don't have to fill it. There will be positions in the manual guidelines that have been added and removed that may not be filled.
So this is not the same as the one we have?
It is, it's grammar, yep. But I'm saying it's not blocking you to keep that position, just because it's in the management.
Want to answer your question on that one, Chief?
Yeah.
I'm still free to jump in if I don't cover yours. I think we ironed out, we had some concerns with the verbiage, the way it was laid out. We jumped ahead on something similar, definitely. On the healthcare insurance. I think we ironed that out, I think so pretty well, what we asked for that. Question under the grievance leave. Adding the statement of additional days may be granted on a case-by-case basis with approval by the mayor. I guess what Marie, the director, directing if I'm wrong, the intent of this, I know you put it in because it's in some other contracts. But our concern is in, in that, it's pretty vague. So are we limiting it to a number of days? Is it coming, are they taking it without pay? Are they, what, what are the qualifications for that and what are the...
Sure. So the language you put in, Ryan, I'm going to correct you here, I think it's, matches the, the other contracts that it has.
But it's still vague.
And the other contracts are also vague. We're happy to limit that, but what we're finding, especially with COVID, is that bereavement days seem going... days seem going longer because they're kind of taking longer to be funerals. And so giving some flexibility to add an additional bereavement day or two, we were certainly welcome to limit that to one or two bereavements.
That, I guess that's what we're looking for is instead of leaving it open-ended, is to have some.
At what time is being used? Is it vacation? Is it sick? Is it additional bereavement? Is it unpaid? Is it?
Sure, we can add some clarification. Thank you for raising that.
On the same page, the holidays, we had some concerns and I I understand the intention is you eliminated the plow on the state in June, because nothing personal, but I think you're locking us in and I have asked management and the Associate Corporation Counsel and Ryan to put some numbers together because the way I read the police department contract, even you adding this and scratching out plow on the state entitled energy payment, so that would be a huge cost to us. So I ask them to do it a little more. Come to that one. Did I miss anything? I see nothing else coming. I think that was it on that.
Great. We'll work on those changes and get those back to you.
I think that's it. We had nothing for the next session, twenty-one, so it was our call was open session.
I don't know. We didn't do a presentation yet.
Yeah, I think that, do you want them to do that now?
No, we're going. So we're about to call, thank you. We had two resolutions that are also on the finance agenda. First, one being the school resource officer for the high schools, that's approved. And second was the purchase of the portable radio receivers, the Motorola Miniter, six speakers, approved. We had a resolution for the public utilities, we requested installed one new, one hundred fifty watt equipment, held the texture of the following location, P P pole, three-six-eight-six-zero on Stone Street, and it's on Buffalo Street. We're going to install a couple of new poles there. So this is approved. Well, I mentioned that I've done some to address a committee with his request from after plant for public safety, and I appreciate that. And on my, on this recording, you have a full rate card request for the three hours. Any questions?
Resolution designated eight-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars and zero cents in the American Rescue Plan Act, loss revenue funds for the purpose of funding various vehicles and pieces of equipment for the Department of Public Works. This includes replacing truck eighteen, which is a two-hundred-and-two-oh-five international salt spreader truck, for a total of two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars and zero cents. In order to replace truck number twenty, a nineteen-ninety-six Ford plow dump truck combination, for a total of two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and zero cents. Two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Replace unit thirty-nine is a two, is a twenty-thirteen Johnston Street Sweeper, for a total of two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and zero cents.
What are you reading?
I know, you're reading on this thing. I know, it screwed you up on the other one, too.
Do that.
Yeah. So the street sweeper is to the cost of two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. It's a twenty-thirteen. And replace unit one-hundred, which is a two, a two-thousand-and-nine trackless utility tractor combination sidewalk plow, for a total of one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars and zero cents. And this resolution also appears on the finance agenda. And, okay, and a resolution designated three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars in the American Rescue Plan Loss Revenue Fund for the purpose of funding various vehicles and pieces of equipment for the Parks Department, to include replacing truck two-oh-six, which is a two-thousand-and-four Chevy dump truck, for a total of fifty-thousand dollars and zero cents. Okay? And then replacing truck two-twenty-one, which is a two-thousand Chevrolet bucket truck, for a total of one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars and zero cents. And replacing a tractor number two-twenty-eight, which is a two-thousand-and-eleven John Gator with loader bucket, for a total of fifty-five-thousand dollars and zero cents. And replace unit two-hundred-and-thirty-eight, a nineteen-seventy-four excavator truck combination trencher, for a total of eighty-five-thousand dollars and zero cents. And this resolution also appears on the finance agenda.
Show us the, show us the drawing.
All right. I think I got enough cord here.
I assume these are all of these?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Patrick Monahan. I'm the manager, fleet manager for the city. For the past few months, I've been working with each department to help them compose a list of vehicles and equipment that they've identified that could possibly be replaced using the ARCA funding. Tonight, I have, as we've been talking about, equipment from the Parks and DPW. They've identified, each department's identified four pieces that they feel are the most priority for their department. So I will briefly go through each one during the slides. If you have any questions, please feel free to stop me and ask away. So I'll start with the Parks Department first. The first one is truck number two-oh-six. It's a two-thousand-four Chevy dump truck. Based on the pictures I have here, and maybe the outside doesn't look so bad, but these are a couple pictures of the frame. The frame is rotted right away on it after eighteen years. I guess it's to be expected. It's just simply not worth putting any more money into to keep it on the road. As we said, the cost of that truck is fifty-thousand dollars. Moving on, truck number two-twenty-one is the two-thousand Chevrolet bucket truck. This is, for the Parks Department, this is a very essential piece of equipment that they use. I'm sure you've seen them around town cutting trees. This truck is there. Each year, we hire in a certified technician from Altech Industries to actually come and give that a thorough inspection to ensure that it's safe to use every year. For the past couple of years, they have been advising us that this truck is going to require extensive overhauls of the components that control the bucket in order to keep it safe. And that price is anywhere from about thirty to forty thousand dollars. Given that this is a twenty-two-year-old truck, it's just simply not worth putting that type of money into something that old.
Probably the biggest, biggest safety feature with them is having a man sixty feet up in the air in a bucket.
Absolutely.
In a twenty-two-year-old truck.
Right. Exactly. And again, the cost to replace this truck is a hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. Next, tractor two-twenty-eight. This is the twenty-eleven John Gator tractor. I apologize, the picture didn't quite catch the the snow plow. This time of year, this tractor is used extensively for plowing, particularly in the downtown area. And then during the summer, it's, it does have a loader attached, which you can kind of see behind it, that they use in the various parks, particularly the stadium. This tractor, based on the kind of work we've put them through, ten years is pretty much the end of its life. And this tractor is starting to show the signs that it's time for it to retire. It's got some internal transmission issues that are coming going. It's only just going to continue to cause us more problems with downtime and costly repairs. The cost to replace this tractor is fifty-five thousand dollars. And then finally, for Parks Department, we have excavator two-thirty-eight. It's a nineteen-seventy-four New Holland. I don't think I got to say much more than that. I, I don't know. I, I can't say where I was in nineteen-seventy-four, but this, this one is definitely.
Not mine.
Yes, this one is definitely ready for, it's long overdue to become a Maytag, so it's, I wouldn't say that finding parts are difficult. I say they're just downright impossible. We just simply can't find repair parts for it anymore. And a piece like this is absolutely essential for the Parks Department, especially based on all of the additional projects and work that they're taking on. Having something small and nimble is very, very much crucial for them, so. The cost to replace that machine is eighty-five thousand dollars.
Can I ask you, with all these that you're proposing?
Sure.
How quickly will we be able to get any of these pieces if we approve?
That is the.
Because when I'm looking at that and going, is that something you can just go out and buy and have it in a month, or is it going to take you a year to get it?
Right. That is the million-dollar question, especially now with the issue with COVID. Something like this, I've spoken to a few vendors and they do have units that are readily available, you know, they're the smaller rubber track excavators that you see now. Those are more readily available. The issue on the other side of that coin is trucks. Trucks are going to be more difficult. We're talking wait times of probably two years.
That bucket truck you were talking about?
Yeah, we could very well be waiting a couple of years.
Yes.
Correct. Over in the Public Works Department, the first, the first truck that they have as a priority is truck number eighteen. This is two-thousand-five international salt spreader truck. Just the fact that it's a salt spreader truck is really its biggest, biggest problem. After seventeen years, in spite of all the best efforts to keep the salt under control and do our best to manage the corrosion, it just, it's winning the battle at this point. The truck is just simply tired and rotted away. The cost to replace that truck is two-hundred-and-thirty thousand. Next is truck number twenty. This is a nineteen-ninety-six Ford plow dump truck. Again, nineteen-ninety-six, we're talking twenty-six years old. The biggest problem with this truck and a few of the others is just obsolescence. We can't find parts for this truck anymore. And we actually had to remove the snow plow from this truck a few years ago because the truck just simply can't do it anymore. And that severely hampers the operations for Public Works because that's one less truck they have available for snow removal operations. Replacement cost for this truck is two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Up next is sweeper number thirty-nine. This is a twenty-thirteen Johnston Street Sweeper. This is the, the normal pose it seems to have nowadays. It's right to my shop right now as we speak. It's a, a street sweeper, as I would argue, is probably one of the most severely used vehicles in the DPW's fleet. It's subjected to continuous dust, continuous dirt, continuous grind, and it's in it all day long for at least eight hours. And ten months out of the year, this thing is running. And even if it's above freezing, it's out there running just to keep the streets clean. There's a lot of moving parts on these machines and it's just, the older they get, the more expensive the repairs become and the more downtime it experiences. Replacement cost for this machine is two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars.
Can we just use rooms?
Definitely. Lots of man-towered rooms, yeah. This final, well, not the final almost, but this one here, DPW one-hundred. I apologize, the picture is a little bit blurry. I actually snapped a photo of the operator last week while they were moving snow downtown and I didn't want him to think I was spying on him. So this is a two-thousand-nine trackless utility sidewalk plow. If any of you've seen these downtown, especially if there's snow events, these are absolutely essential for getting the snow off the sidewalks and clearing the areas, especially around City Hall, is one example. Not only in the wintertime are these important, but these are used year-round by the Public Works Department. They're multifunctional, they can use several different attachments, use them for the cold planer for grinding out potholes, a brew attachment, and they actually even have a boom mower at one time we've used for these. There's, there's just many, many functions for these machines and they're used every day, year-round. Very, very important piece of equipment. And after thirteen years, very, very worn out. And the cost to replace this machine is a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars.
It's also instrumental in the leaf cleanup.
Yes, yep.
Because you use literally twelve months out of the year.
Yeah, there's never a day these aren't out. And then finally, I have one, as I like to call it, an alternate for you all, just to present to you for just conversation purposes. This is a picture of one of the three sidewalk plows that are in the DPW fleet. This is number one-oh-seven. This is a nineteen-seventy-nine Bombardier sidewalk plow. That's the oldest one. However, the newest one we own is twenty-two years old. These machines are extremely difficult to continue to maintain. And what makes matters worse with that is the fact that this company, Bombardier, is no longer in business. So the ability for us, again, the whole issue of obsolescence, trying to find the repair parts for these, which are very, very proprietary to these machines, you can't just simply go to NAPA and buy something for them, is becoming more and more difficult. With that being said, there is another company out there that has, I guess you could say, taken the ratings and continued to make these, but they're entirely different machine, a different company. And they do have them available. Replacement cost for one of these is a hundred-and-fifty-four thousand. The reason I bring this up is, is that these previous eight that I just presented to you add up to the amount that is potentially available for us to use for funding. This one here would put us over, but it's, it's a, it's a, it's a difficult decision because this is something that is very important and I don't want to discount the importance of this machine, but it's used maybe half a dozen times, two to three months out of the year when they can. The previous machine I just showed you is used every day, year-round. From the department's perspective, they're looking at what they can spend either way and their, their feeling is, and I can understand this, that that previous machine I just showed you, that one-hundred, they can use it all year-round versus this one that's going to sit for ten, maybe nine to ten months out of the year. So I just bring that up as a, as a situation and as something to address to.
Is there not any other option in terms of purchasing a vehicle that can have multi-use precise, is there something other, other company or other? In other words, obviously, that's for, well, sidewalks, that's pretty specific.
There's nothing out there that's going to meet the speed you need to talk.
I'm just asking.
You know, we've been meeting the, the school board right now and they've got a tractor, a blower, but they, they're just slow, you know?
Yeah, this.
This is the only thing we found that makes any sense.
Right. Particularly for the sidewalks where you've got hills or just uneven terrain or where there's gigantic drips that the other machines simply can't break through. This, this is like a tank, literally. It's shaped like one.
That's why I ask you, because I want people to understand too, public, that it's not the, you know, home vehicle or a big snowblower.
Oh, no. No, absolutely, no.
These machines are specific or not only for the job, but to do a lot of areas.
Right.
Just around the block in school or.
Right.
You might have seen the snowblower on Second Street and Washington Street this past week. It doesn't go much faster than your snowblower you drive. And the hurries, the whole process, it just takes forever. We've all seen this flying down the, down the street.
I guess I have a couple of questions. Obviously, we're here, so we get an awful lot of complaints, we hear a lot right now. And ultimately, to me, I, I understand manpower issue, timing issue, we can't get, you know, an every-weapon call, go under, it changes in a minute. But one call we've gotten recently is, at least me personally, and as, obviously, you mentioned it, is sidewalk. I, I guess, I'm looking through these here, Pat, and I have a question for you.
Sure.
Comparing it to your list of, that was provided, the prioritized list, and we kind of skipped over. And we kind of skipped over. Would we skip over, we picked one of the two spreader trucks, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and we picked one dump truck?
Yes.
But then we skipped over dumping plow trucks, an excavator, and went down to a street sweeper that's two thousand and thirteen. And here you have this piece of equipment, a nineteen seventy-nine Bombardier. And you just both said how critical it is.
You're missing the whole point. My point is, it's not critical except for the four or five days a year. Last year, we didn't pull it out of the barn. And all I'm saying is, if you want the sidewalks plow, which I know we all do, it's been a hot topic for the past two weeks. We need to have a piece of equipment to get it. So we put it out there for consideration.
Can I finish?
Yeah.
You're getting defensive and I get it, I understand. And I'm not critical of.
No, I don't.
I'm not being critical of your choice. I'm just asking, if this is a priority, why is it an alternate? I mean, I guess that's what I'm asking.
I guess part of the reason is we thought, let's come back to the council. See what you guys feel is a priority. I mean, the other one, like you said, is out every day. It was out today.
Well, I.
Jeff, I think the point, I mean, I get it.
It's kind of like, who are your kids as a priority?
Yes, it's like, maybe this isn't used as much, but I think most people, and I mean, I get people saying, why are we spending more time and money and energy just keeping streets? That's not a safety issue, it's not a security issue. Okay, I'm just saying. As a people say, is that when it snows, even though it's not a lot, to the point where it has to be done, you know, all year long, when the dust snow now becomes a safety issue for people going to school, kids walking to school and so forth. Even though, I get it, it's not used as much. When it is used, it's very important. And I'm not demeaning this street sweep.
No, no.
I think most people would, if they had to prioritize between having the street sweeper come down the street on a nice sunny day versus after the snowstorms or the kids walking to school.
So we're gonna leave clean, huh? And people are screaming, why did they leave the street like this?
I know, I was.
You're never gonna make that one happen.
I'm not arguing, I'm just giving you, examining you the. If the street sweepers are a day later, they're freaking out. They don't like to leave.
Is this the only street sweeper we have?
We have two.
Okay, so what year is the other one?
It's a twenty twenty.
Okay, so that's the one we just bought, right?
Correct.
So can you get parts for this one to extend the longevity? Is it in the case where you mentioned all these other parts are obsolete and it's not cost, it's cost limited to maintain? Can we ship by new or?
Parts are still available for that, I will say. That's one that is not obsolete at this point.
Yeah, but if you look at the list from the DPW, that's the piece of equipment that we're spending the most money on annually. It's twenty-nine thousand, on average, twenty-nine thousand dollars a year just to keep it running. With that twenty-three, the street sweeper. Just wanted to point that out.
Well, I guess the question is, so that's an actual piece that they deal with and have to fix.
No, we had asked Pat to also put that information in there for the council. I will talk briefly about what we're doing with sidewalks. But obviously, that's a discussion. We can obviously add it in. We only set a certain amount for Pat and Jeff to kind of put together a list of equipment. But no, it's not breaking up twenty of the extra.
So can I ask one more question? Is this what you feel are the top priorities? Has it changed from the list we were given? Yes, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Well, during.
You're the maintenance guy, so why am I asking?
Yeah, I know.
You're the guy.
I definitely have my own opinions as far as what I feel are priorities as far as their conditions. Ultimately, I try to work as much as I can with each department and their respective managers because I respect the fact that they know what they feel is their most pressing need. However, if you're asking me what's, what would be the most important, I have to look towards the oldest stuff because of the fact of the obsolescence. That's my, that's my biggest concern is because when it's broke down and it's sitting in there, we can't get sidewalks plowed or we can't get a street plowed because I can't find parts for these. We got a big problem.
And that's part of the reason, I realize that that twenty-nine thousand a year, but I guess if we can prolong that for another year and it makes more sense to make something that they're just gonna sit and drive and collect dust because we can't get parts for it, that's more problematic to me.
The only thing you're leaving out, I disagree with you, is there are certain pieces of equipment that are more priority goals.
Well, that.
That salt spreader.
Agreed, and that I'm not arguing with that. I mean, obviously, that's what we're hearing now too.
And I think like the parts backhoe, that's how that thing got pushed down the list all the time. To the point where it just got obsolete, you know?
But I'm guessing, what I'm saying is, you have a twenty-twenty street sweeper and we still can't get parts for this one. I don't know the answer, I'm asking for your input. Maybe you can't answer me tonight. It is, would it make more sense if we're not going to allot the extra money to buy this or to buy another piece on your list that's just as old or?
We sat down as a team and we thought that street sweeper is gonna be a big hitter. It's a big number, expensive pieces.
I guess I'm just looking at, if we're gonna be continually spending more money and having a harder time getting parts, I think we're hurting ourselves too when we're not working with that on these or maybe, am I right?
Yeah.
Who sure?
Definitely, yeah. Yeah.
As far as your point about this, when my office is on North Main Street and the kids have to walk into the street and around because they can't get through the deep shovel, but a lot of people don't, they're vacant property. This is a critical piece because I'm sure it's also happening around the other school. And we have a scoop of senior housing across the street and they try to get across to get to the drugstore because they can get road crews here, it's the closest thing. That's a critical piece of equipment for people to clear those areas where it does, it gets sprayed with the city plow. They get chunks, very difficult for an average person to get out of the way. You know, I agree with you that I think this one is more critical. But I also have another question. Some of the other programs we've done, you buy the equipment, you keep it for a couple of years, you trade it in and get new. Are any of these pieces that we're talking about available for that where we get out of the replacement or repair cost because we're continually upgrading? We've done it with other things.
Right.
I just didn't know if that's possible. Can we, are any of these what?
For these particular ones, it's possible. It's not, I hate to keep harping on this because everybody does, but COVID has really messed that up because we used to be able to do that with cattular equipment. We still can do it with pickup trucks, but the availability is just, it's not what it was.
But towards the future, maybe looking at that, because I just see that it makes a lot of sense when you're talking obsolescence and expensive repairs. If you can keep upgrading, get a good trade value for it, you're continually renewing and replenishing without having to deal with something that's now thirty years old.
I think I have one more question. The city fleet prioritized list included JPD parts, DPW, fire department, and fleet. So this funding here, correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan, I guess, that you're proposing between parts and DPW, it beats up whatever was in the hardback fund for that? So we wouldn't, obviously, we already did the JPD four vehicles, but there's still two there. There's fire department and a fleet, so.
None of those were funded. None of those were funded in the original executive project.
Okay.
So just going off of DPW and parts equipment, it wasn't the original executive project.
But that on your priority, this is what I'm struggling with.
Yeah, and it was just based on the two needs, the money got eaten out fast. A million, two was a lot of money to each of us individually, but by the time we both got together, it was just.
You see the equipment, this.
I see it over here.
I think it's hard to tear down.
But these are two thousand threes and two thousand fives.
I know.
You know, so, I mean, they're just as old.
I mean, off duty aside, and I'm not trying to do a little bit, we should be starting this kind of every year. Like, and then, or should then, you know, that's.
I think most of us would love to.
I know that, I'm just saying, with the amount of equipment we have to keep it anywhere near close to where we are, we should be.
I guess as a finance person, I just want to stay in the case that I don't want to be back here and we buy this, I know we may still have all these other things out there. And in six, eight months, saying we need a bad decision, right? I don't want to be back here saying that we've got all these parts now that we can't even get and now this is, now we need to go to continue to eat it all up on one piece of equipment like we have two street sweeper. I just don't want to be in that position. I think now is the time that we can address this the right way and I want to do it for the rest.
Back to the bottom of here, I don't think, if we have no intention of getting out of the sidewalk business, we can have it. Even if we keep it, only run it four days a year, you gotta have a good one.
You gotta have one that's not obsolete.
And the other ones are all old as well.
Yes.
So, yes, I mean, which I know.
Seventy-nine and eighty-five and a hundred thousand.
Tuesday or Wednesday, we sent all three out with an hour and a half, all three.
All were wrote down.
Would we be more effective to vet one? Would we be able to vet one?
They are available, rentals, yeah. Because the companies know how much it costs to maintain.
Well, I guess if you could do that, I mean, before we vote, like, get us that, you know? But yeah, I think that would help.
Sure.
Well, you know, the kids, they did not close school on the previous Monday and the kids were in the road, so. And the calls that we got, you know, that I got anyway, people was a big concern. And I told them about the alien fleet. I went down and looked at them. I get a plow ride around the other day and I said, no. And their fumes come in and they're really uninhabitable, almost, a couple of them. And so when it comes to public safety with people in the roads, I mean, the school wasn't, the schools weren't quick to cancel, like, they didn't at all. So gotta keep that in mind and they might keep up that in the future, so. Kind of important.
This is a point of interest for any student. Are the schools responsible for plowing around their schools and clearing the areas just like everybody else? They're getting a lot of money from the state. Maybe they need to invest in some of this. I'm serious.
I think the mayor's gonna address that.
Maybe they need to address it because I've seen the same issues. No, I'm saying, you know, if a private, if a private business has to do it, why aren't they not reporter to to deal with? And that might be another way to get some of those areas cleared by the school.
I just also wanted just real briefly, if I could, mention the amount, the auto tracking, financial tracking allocation we were, we obviously have twenty-eight million. We have spent two-point-three million to date out, or at least allocated for things that we have a need. So we are out there. I kind of did a total real quickly on the capital projects, the Everlast revenue column that was given to us. Just to put the numbers out there for you to think about, along with this funding as we go through this process. The parts department has seven-point-one million on this list. DPW has two-point-seven, this is excluding personnel. Police has six-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand. Fire has nine-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand. IT only forty-two thousand. Administration, three-hundred thousand. The CHIPS funding and then the engineering funding of a hundred-and-four thousand. You wanna look at it by department. Okay?
Anything else before we go in there? You're up.
Okay. Promise not to tie the score like the bills in the last eight seconds. Too soon, okay. I want you to break the ice down. Just a couple of items for the council. We do have a couple of executive session items as well, just to recap a few things. I want to, first off, just make a few comments on the governor's executive budget that came out the other day. So we've done some review of that, although we are still going through that. Just some high-level items that are going to be important for the city going forward. First and foremost, the aid, the aid to municipalities. State is staying the same under the budget. So we currently get just over four million dollars in aid municipalities, aid payments. That is intended to stay the same under the budget. However, there is a historic amount of money being allocated for roads and bridges in New York under the executive budget this year. Five-hundred-and-thirty-eight million dollars in CHIPS funding, one-hundred million dollars in extreme winter weather recovery, and the creation of a hundred-million-dollar pothole fund. You may have seen that the governor has declared a war on potholes. That was an interesting phrase. But there will be funds made available to municipalities to deal with potholes within the city. Still waiting to learn more about what that will be, but there is some funding for that. On top of a very significant increase to CHIPS. We rolled over a good chunk of money this year in terms of CHIPS projects that we normally do for roads. So we are intending to see an increase in that next year as well. Couple other highlights, there's five-hundred billion dollars for clean water and wastewater initiatives. In the past, the city has actually utilized that fund in the combination of a grant and loan fund to help develop and change some of our drinking water pipes, right? There is bringing back a program called Restore New York. It's been out, to be honest, it was about two thousand and seventeen. It's meant to come for cities to combat blight by supporting those municipalities to address vacant and abandoned buildings. So it's a fund to help cities deal with vacant and abandoned buildings. Some for demolition, some for rehabilitation. There's a whole mixture of things. So we're really excited to see that. That mixture actually favors cities that have a larger, both abandoned and vacant population as well as a lower median income. And so back in two thousand and seventeen, the city was rated pretty high on that to get funding. So we most likely anticipate we'll probably see some funding from that going forward. There's also a very large amount of funding for gun violence proposals. Multiple programs, they're all community-based approaches. But I do want to note that there is a special program that includes fifty million dollars for capital investments in communities impacted by gun violence. You may remember earlier last year, we did receive a city, not in particular, but some of the agencies received a grant based on our increased gun violence here in the city of Janes Town, along Buffalo, Niagara Falls, and some other areas in western New York. So we would be on the deck there for potential funding. It is meant to help the capital programs that help reduce some of the gun violence. I don't have any answer on how those programs are gonna work yet. And some of you are like, I wonder how that's gonna work? I don't have that yet, but as we get more information, we'll give that out to you. There is a twenty-five-billion-dollar housing program fund is being established to create more affordable housing across the state. One-point-six-billion dollars in broadband investments fund. Forty-four million dollars to help state and local governments in cyber defense. That's one of the biggest things that we've seen especially here in the city is the potential for cyber hackers, cyber actors to try to get into our networks. There will be a proposal to change the judgment interest rate. So if we have a judgment against you, you pay a nine percent interest rate on that judgment. There is a proposal to change that to the market rate, I don't know. And there is a proposal for vacation rentals to be taxed the same as hotels, bed and breakfast, and others. So the Airbnb will be vacation rentals, or the B R O, someone who'd use those in the back. So any questions on the New York State law? Just a couple of highlights on how it impacts us. Still to be seen what else is in there. We're trying to figure some of that out and talk to some other connections and all of them. A couple of other items for the council and for the public. Garbage, that comes up every meeting. That is obviously an issue that the DPU is still working through. We recognize all the concerns. We had Dave Weathers here the last council session. We're still working through that, but recognize that we understand that this is a need to make sure that garbage is collected within the city. And they're working on different ways that they can notify, still collect the garbage, but notify homeowners of the rules. Still working through that. The other one I wanted to discuss briefly is schools. So two items on schools, one on school zones. You may remember, have seen that we were working to, with the public works department in the school to do a traffic study around Purcell. We are continuing to work on that. We're intending to meet with the school. Uh, we are continuing to work on that, uh, we're, we're intending to meet with the school soon in order to discuss, uh, what's going on in that intersection and what else we can do to support some of the traffic safety around that school. Uh, we are also working on a much larger school safety initiative with New York State in terms of grant funding that's combined with federal and statewide funding to look at, uh, safety zones around each of our schools. And snowplow, we asked President Dilz. Uh, we recognize that, uh, the issue that we have with being able to plow sidewalks and allowing our kids to get to school. As many of you noted, it is responsibility of the homeowner to clear their sidewalk in front of their home. And typically, the city, once we're able to get those off, plows off of main routes, we will try and plow specialty school zone routes. So routes that were, are designated to help get kids fit to schools. Uh, that route map hasn't been updated, I think it was updated in two thousand eighteen, Jeff, is that something about red? So we have been, uh, working with and continue to work with the school to try to update those school routes to try to figure out, are there better ways that we are now seeing kids walking to school? And in conjunction with the school district staff, uh, can we work together to make sure that those updated routes are plowed? So it's not just the city, it's the school and the city working together to make sure that we have a better, more mapped-out route that our kids are now walking to school. Um, we're, we're looking at a couple of different items as well to try to encourage and do more snow plowing across the city. Uh, but it is, uh, that becomes not only a, a person power issue, but also a union issue, so we're working through some of those details. Uh, but we will be meeting with the school to help address some of the school routes. Uh, and the other items I have, only have two, I have a couple items for executive session. I have, uh, two items for collective bargaining agreement, and I have three personnel items for executive session. What actually is it?
You said two, you just said.
Yeah, sorry. Let me add some more, yeah. I got two collective bargaining, three personnel. I made a quick, and I gotta wanna get home.
We move to go on to executive session, you want executive session, second half, please.
Hi.
We can have, uh, both chiefs, thank Ryan, and Jack, right?